For our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all in authority, we commend this city, this county, this state, this nation, and your people with generous care and understanding. Remember those who, Lord, who lie upon a bed of affliction; comfort those who mourn a loss, oh, loved one. In your most holy and precious name we pray this prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
Here.
President Protam Nicholas?
Item number five is approval of the minutes of the 25th meeting on June 12th. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, Madam President.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Kim.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Item number six, approval of minutes of the work session on July 5th, 2017. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Kim.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Item number seven, report of the mayor and city council. I'd like to start with Councilman Smalls.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any report at this time.
Okay. Councilman Ricks?
Thank you, Madam President. Over the weekend, the Old Town Laurel cleanup committee, if you will, did have an operation where we went through Old Town and there was about 15, 20 people that participated and cleaned up quite a bit of trash that normally wouldn't be seen, but by looking into the small cracks, if you will, in the community, we find all kinds of things and it's just amazing. I think we got like 15 bags. I want to thank Mr. Free for picking them up for us this morning and I want to thank the citizens who came out to make sure that our city stays clean. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Curry?
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, and I hope many of you attended, July 1st, our parade and our July 4th celebration down at the lakes. I want to give special thanks to our police and Park and Rec and Public Works for the wonderful job that they did and also to our July 4th committee. They pulled off a wonderful event again this year. I've heard lots of comments from everybody and they said the, per usual, Laurel's got one of the best ones bar none as far as our fireworks celebration. Upcoming, we've got to have City Hall in the park and that's going to be at the Wellington Pool House or outside on the gardens there. You're all welcome to come to that. And we also attended, at the end of the month, the MML conference, which was very informative. And it's always nice to network and find out what other problems are going on in other cities so we can figure out the best solution. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo what's already been said. I'd like to thank all of the departments that let us have a successful and very hot 4th of July celebration. I'd also like to talk about the MML workshops. I think they were great. We attended, most of us attended most of the same ones, the combating opioid heroin crisis, ending homelessness, the Cabinet Secretary's Roundtable, and the rental property regulations were very informative. And I'm just so glad that the state has taken a lead on all of these very important issues. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me offer some condolences to Kathy Harvey on the passing of her mother. Kathy works in Department of Budget and Personnel. Also to Ms. Audrey Barnes, the passing of her uncle, as well as Mike Thomas, a member of Fire Marshal's Office, the passing of his sister-in-law. To Robin Cooch, who in our Park and Recs, the passing of her father, and as well as Randy Snurly, who is with our Police Department on the passing of his stepmother. So I'm going to offer condolences to all of them. Notice Bill Bayless is out in the audience. I know he was a little bit under the weather. It's good to see Bill back and 100% and watch it because Pop's behind you. He's got your back, though. We did have an incident over the weekend where we had a lot of tagging that took place, starting, I guess, mainly Cherry Lane, Chief, up and down Cherry Lane, other areas, the some of the city properties, as well as some of the private property. We are and have been out trying to clean that up, as well as Police Department takes photographs of everything that was done and looks into that as well. We want to encourage the public, if you see somebody tagging or spay painting, we would encourage you to call our Police Department. You don't have to give your name. If you have any information, then I encourage you to call the Police Department as well. There was quite a bit of damage and mischief done over the weekend on several areas of the city. Did have the opportunity to hold our City Hall in the park at Greenview Drive Pool. I want to thank for those residents that came out on the 21st, as well as here in this chambers, we had the I-95 signed dedication in memory of Lance Corporal Eugene Mills III. I want to thank all the staff and those that helped to make that a reality. It was very well attended and we want to, again, thank the Mills family for allowing us to be a small part of that as well. We did do the golden shovel presentations. I want to thank council for being there as well. One was at 613 Montgomery, 613 Carroll Avenue and one at 7709 Kiltipper Court. So we encourage you to go by and if you have somebody that you'd like to nominate for that, please contact my office or Joanne Barr's office as well and Department of Park and Recreation. So we did have the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. I want to acknowledge and thank city staff, our elected officials, as well as the community. This was the 10th year that the City of Laurel achieved the Banner City Award. We have, since this has been started at Maryland Municipal League, we have received that every year. It's qualifications that municipalities have to do throughout the year, meet a certain standards, one of their highest awards that they give out to communities. So again, congratulations to all. Also for Heal Cities, which is the health program that we are involved with as well, we did receive a city, a silver level award. And again, that requires participation from the community as well as our staff here at City Hall. The city's Independence Day Celebration, again, you just heard, I want to thank and congratulate the volunteer committee of the Independence Day Celebration. They'll be meeting on the 12th to start for next year's planning, so if you're interested in participating, the meeting will be here on the 12th. I think it's at 7:00 PM at Municipal Center if you'd like to be involved. Just a great day, well planned out. Karine Kubek in particular was the chair this year. Karine's a member of our Communications Department, as well as many volunteers. We did make an announcement, we'll follow up later, that the stage will become the Harrison-Burton Community Stage in honor of Kay, as we said. Kay was very involved with the committee for many years, was very instrumental in the project of the stage, as well as the big roof that is there now, that was built in two different stages. So we'll move forward with that at a later date, President. Just a couple announcements. City Hall in the park will be at the Wellington Community Center on July the 19th from 6:30 until 8:00. I have a presentation. Steve, you want to do yours first and then I'll do mine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to call up our friends from the First Baptist Church of Laurel. And like to introduce Senior Pastor Brent.
You got it.
Yeah. And in the car cuff, is Sharon? I'm okay, I'll get through this. Is he a church administrator? And then Mr. Yeah, it's hard to pronounce his last name, but go ahead. Mr. Do and Nay. I've been practicing that all day, but I know I wouldn't get it right. But what this started at is 11 months ago, a conversation between the church and some of the staff on how the church could help the city in a disaster. And that has led to months and months of discussions and back and forth, and they finally have got into a memorandum of understanding with the city to be our first volunteer donation and volunteer distribution center on disasters. And what this will entail is in case of an emergency incident within the town, there'll be a specific spot at the church for the collection of clothing, on food, and the distribution of the same in case we have to give it back out to the citizens that are affected by any type of disaster within the city. It's very important for us to have a place like this. In my couple visits up to the church and the facility, it's a lovely, lovely facility. They're already in the process of really doing the clothing and food distribution already, so it's just a natural for them to step forward. So on that, I'd like to get the mayor to present something special to them.
Thank you, Steve. It's presented to First Baptist Church in your commitment and participation in the City of Laurel's Emergency Management Program on behalf of Mayor and City Council. And as always, you all do great things. You do some things quiet that nobody knows about, do very involved in the community. So very happy to make this presentation to you all.
Well, being drafted, it is truly a pleasure to be here and really, this is a bonus. We really are doing this because we want to give back to the community. We are beneficiaries of the community, policing and fire department, and our families at the church enjoyed the fireworks on 4th of July. So all these good things are coming our way, so we at the church, we want to find a way to give back. And one way we can do that is to be a provider of a distribution center. And it is truly our pleasure and to do this. Thank you.
We have another presentation I'd like to present. It's Proclamation 2017-8, whereas Park and Recreation Programs are a very important part of our community throughout the country, and whereas our Park and Recs are important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributions to the environment and well-being of the community and the region. Whereas having park programs increase, having park and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity throughout, increase property values, expansion of local tax base, increase tourism and attractions, and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas parks have improved water quality, protects groundwater, prevents flooding, improves the quality of air we breathe, provides vegetation, buffers development, and provide habitat for our wildlife. Now therefore, I pray amen to the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Park and Recreation Month.
I just want to thank the mayor and city council for supporting this initiative. This is a national initiative, so all across the nation, July is being recognized as Parks and Recreation Month. And it's also wonderful that we get so much support for the importance of parks and recreation in our community. So I invite you all, if you haven't been out, to enjoy the parks and the programs and all the facilities that we have here in Laurel, which we have in abundance, please go out and get your play on this month. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Madam President.
I live at 607 Montgomery Street, apartment 7, Laurel, Maryland 20707. And my request is trying to get the paving of our alley, because if you, if any one of you would want to drive your cars down that alley between 7th Street and 6th Street, you're going to have to dodge the potholes and that's going to mess up your axles and flat tires and things like that. And when it snows, the plow won't go down and plow behind our cars, and that's not fair to us that live on that alley. And I've got 15 signatures from that alley, both on the Montgomery Street and on Prince George Street and the few little bungalows in the alley that have to deal with the potholes too. So anyway, if somebody could really look at that and see what they can do, because I know 617, they have a yard behind it that has a pile of stones that's there, but they won't, they won't put it down in the alley. That's for them to use, and that's not fair to the rest of us that drive through there.
I'm just going to make a couple comments. We have, I've asked Rob Farie, our Director of Public Works, to take a look at the alley. I also want to make sure people understand, the alleyways are owned by, most of the time, two of our property owners. We have to have all the property owners on board before we pave an alleyway. And I also want to make sure everybody understands, it's very seldom, even if it's paved, we plow the alleyways when it snows. Is that anything else, Rob? But we're going to, we're going to look in it. We're going to, we're going to look at the alleyway, see what we can do to help fix up.
Yes, I got pictures on my cell phone.
I'm familiar with it. I'll come by there. But Rob will check it out and he'll let the council keep us and post it on what action we're taking. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Since there's no one else scheduled to speak...
I'm sorry. We have, and I'm sorry I didn't get the, we have some gentlemen that are getting their badges tonight, so if you'll introduce yourself.
Okay.
Tell us what badge you're getting and where you're from, a little bit about, this is your communications badge?
Yes.
So you'll be really good at this, won't you? Step up to the microphone. Your own TV is what, we can do each one individually. How's that? Tell us a little bit about yourself and tell us who you are.
My name is Michael Stroud. I'm here from Troop 1673, Boy Scouts. And we're here, as you mentioned, working on our communications merit badge as one of the prerequisites for camp that we are headed off to in about a week and a half.
And tell us where you live. Give us your address so we can send you. I think Kim will send some information as well.
We all live in West Laurel, myself particular, myself particularly, 16919 Melbourne Drive.
Okay.
I'm Ben Lason, Troop 1673, and I live on 6514 Park Boulevard.
I'm Gavin Pissago. I'm in 1673, and I live on 20707 Downing Street.
You want to tell us anything else?
No, sir.
You glad school's, you glad school's out?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. I figured that. I hope everybody's having a good time, safe time. We will, Mr. Les, who is out, is our Eagle Scout, so he usually does what I'm doing and, but we want to thank you for coming out. Ms. Routh, who is the clerk, before you leave, you can get a card or she'll get an address to make sure we have it for you and she'll send you information, I think, because you'll need some to say that you were here as well and it'll be part of the record here at City Hall. So thank you for coming out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Since there's no one else scheduled to speak, I close the public hearing at 6:23. Agenda item number nine is consideration of a recommendation to award a contract to upgrade the emergency operations center.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. As discussed at the work session, we offer you as a recommendation to award a technology upgrade contract for the emergency operations center. We're in the midst of that. We're entering the phase for technology and tonight we're recommending that you award a contract to Tech Ops of Stevensville, Maryland for the price of $128,873.36.
This was discussed at our work session on July 5th. Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract that was mentioned at our work session and was just spoken to by Mr. Frost.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Kim.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
Here. I vote yes.
President Nicholas?
Agenda item number 10, consideration of a recommendation to award a contract for canteen rehab vehicle replacement. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Madam President. As you recall, at the work session, we had noted that there were several volunteers that served on the committee to recommend changes to a new canteen configuration, and they are in the audience here. We have three members of the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department who also provide services on the canteen, and they are here in support of this effort. As we discussed, the condition of the current canteen is such that the vehicle, for safety reasons, was taken out of service. We assembled this committee, we came up with a revision to the configuration of a canteen, and we put together specifications for the body of the canteen, as well as the cab and chassis. And as you recall, a contract for the cab and chassis was already passed by the council. That contract was for $82,950, and that unit has, I believe, been ordered. The balance of the project is to actually construct the body of the unit, which will house all of the rehab equipment, rehab space, as well as the cooking area and most of the components of the kitchen. The, excuse me, the unit, the box unit proposal that we received is for $148,950. The recommendation is for the mayor and council to award the contract to a specific vendor due to the number of, the high number of devices that are being placed in the unit that are specifically copyrighted by this builder and I would note that this builder has done very many government contracts for food distribution vehicles, however, at the moment, has no open contract, contracts. Because of that, we are still recommending that we go with this because of the specialized equipment that is, that is under copyright by this builder. We've also compared unit costs for units in the Washington National Capital Area and find that the prices on the proposal from this vendor for the box unit are very well in line with the current market. So it is our recommendation that the contract for $148,950 be awarded to Custom Mobile Food Equipment Incorporated of Hampton, New Jersey.
Thank you. This was discussed at our July 5th work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we award the contract as specified by Mr. Fleming and in the amount of $148,950, but I have to question, should we make it a round number just in case you need a couple extra dollars?
We have a contingency in this number.
You do have a contingency built in. Okay, for the $148,950.
Can I get a second?
Madam President?
Yes.
The committee members that are present in our audience, are they happy with the features that have been? And will you be following up with the features as this is being built? You've made arrangements? Mr. Fleming, we'll keep you informed.
And less important.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Kim.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number 11, consideration of a recommendation for the purchase of Exon Cameras Evidence.com.
Good evening, Madam President, council members, mayor. As we discussed at July 5th work session, in 2013, we started a body wear program through Taser and Evidence.com. Initially, we purchased cameras in 2013. The camera section is separated from Taser and has become Axion. It's the same product with no changes, just a different name and a different business model. There are a lot of contractual improvements with the result, or as a result of this split. We recently changed our retention period for video from 180 days to 366 days due to the Tort Claims Act. Quote was requested and received from Axion. The quote includes data storage, licensing for 55 cameras, all the necessary accessories, and replacement of all of our current equipment and a two and a half year replacement schedule, which means every two and a half years we'll get new equipment. So for a five-year period, for $33,216 per year, which totals overall $159,971.43. Again, considering the replacement of the first cameras, this is a money-saving venture. Fiscal year 2018 budgeted $16,334. The new contract is 6,006, I'm sorry, 660445 plus a one-time 50298 for shipping and handling. So the total due this year is $27,107.43, resulting in a shortfall of $10,733.43. We're going to identify alternate funding sources, perhaps asset forfeiture speed camera or the possibility of legit grant funding. There is some money through legit. Fiscal year 19, 20, 21, and 22 will be future budgeted line items. Requesting approval to enter into a five-year contract with... Requesting approval to enter into a five-year contract with Axion Evidence.com for $33,216 per year, totaling $159,971.43.
Thank you. This was discussed at our July 5th work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I recommend that we approve. The bid is set forth by Chief McLaughlin.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll cam.
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Item number 12, second public hearing on resolution number 10-17, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, adopting an annexation plan for the annexation of certain real property known as 7041 Conti Road, Laurel, Maryland, and 7051 Conti Road, Laurel, Maryland, owned by Strite Matter Conti LLC. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I opened the public hearing at 6:33. Since there's no one scheduled to speak, I'm closing the public hearing at 6:33. A public hearing of record with possible action is scheduled for the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, July 24th, at 6:00 p.m. Item number 13.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gibbs is present tonight. If we could have him come up on this item? And we need to amend 10-17 to include a sponsor. Why don't we add the council members and the council president?
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Gibbs. How are you?
Good evening, everyone.
I just, I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about the multi-use park, and I was wondering if you could expound on that?
Well, we were requested to use the minds of the concept drawing, and we did that. We had a meeting with your staff as to the concept drawing.
Ms. Barr?
I have a question. Do you have a question?
Okay.
Christian Pulli? The meeting was with Christian Pulli. I believe Karen Ruff was present, and possibly even Sarah Green was present at that meeting, if I recall correctly.
Okay.
Your parks director was not.
Okay.
We had the park laid out in general, in the same location that we had shown it in the earliest iterations of the layout of the property, when we had come in and talked about lot densities and things of that nature. And there were some questions about the dimensions of the field itself. Your staff, and quite frankly, I've actually been making calls today, trying to ascertain exactly what dimension your staff is seeking. I think they wanted perhaps a couple feet longer than what we were proposing, and I think they wanted a 10-foot viewing area around the outside of the field as well. So we're endeavoring to make that change, but I'm just very curious as to what the actual dimension is that your staff is looking for, because we couldn't find anything published in the city as for, as far as dimensions for a, quote, "regulation" field.
Well, in our discussions that we had with Ms. Pulli and Ms. Ruff, at the time that we were looking at the drawing that you provided, we weren't necessarily opposed to a smaller field and a regulation, adult-sized soccer field. I think some of the questions were with regards to the amount of space surrounding the field as to allow for safe space, as to allow for places for people to sit on the sidelines and to navigate around the actual field. When we looked at the drawing that was provided, it looked like there was additional lands available, not to go longer, but to actually go wider. And so that was one of the questions we had. And then we were also concerned about the proximity of the parking lot with regards to where the field was and what the topography was for navigating from the parking lot up to the field.
Right, right. Well, I can tell you that on our proposal, the field was 300 feet long and 160 feet wide. In speaking with our engineers, I believe we have, we could provide 340 feet by 190, which might provide the viewing area that you were looking for. My recollection was that we were also told at that meeting that they would like to have the actual field be a little bit longer, but maybe only five feet or so. And this is actually a very fortuitous event, because we're trying to iron this out.
Sure.
And we want to give the city what they need, if it's at all possible.
Okay.
Mr. Gibbs is correct. Internally, we were talking about what is the size of a standard multi-use athletic field, and there were some, in the planning world, there was such a thing. Joanne had her staff pull that. Unfortunately, I don't have that information with me right now, but Mr. Gibbs is correct. It wasn't far off from what was proposed. It was a few feet wider and a few feet longer than what they were looking at.
So we can get together and get us some drawings and let us know what it's going to look like before the next few days or so?
Well, we can certainly, as soon as your staff gives us the dimensions they're looking for, we can tell you if we can provide that. We think we can, based upon what I'm hearing, what I heard today from our engineers, and what I heard from your staff today. So we think we can accommodate that. Final design drawings are really very premature for a final design drawing of the field at this point in time, but dimensions and viewing area around the field are certainly, we're able to discern that a lot in time.
And I always worry about that, because I know preliminary, and that's what we were facing before, and there would be some park there, multi-use, but I didn't know. And I don't think we've ever seen any drawings on this.
I believe that the architect who was working on that did contact Mr. Bailey in our office and spoke to him with regards to sizes and the need for space around that, and I believe he was going to be sending him something, if he has not already.
Our engineer, Cleve Stover, talked with Mr. Bailey this afternoon.
Oh, great.
We're trying to work it out. We want to work it out. We want to give you everything we can. I mean, as a matter of fact, we're giving you the entirety of the Kaufman property that's really not used in the area, because we had had some conversations about the potential for the city to put a trail down. We're proposing to give the city substantially more land than just.
Yeah, just some of it soggy, I think.
There's no question. It's wetland area.
That was our concern, was with the amount that fell into the floodplain and what will be considered wetlands that would not be able to be developed on.
Okay. Well, I'll wait to hear, see some drawings on this. Marty would let me know, and I'll let the council know. Okay? Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We close the public hearing at 6:40. Public hearing of record with possible action is scheduled for the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, July 24th, at 6:00 p.m. Item number 13, second public hearing on annexation resolution number 11-17, first 2017 annexation, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel entitled "First 2017 Annexation: Enlarging the Corporate Boundaries of the City of Laurel by Annexing Into the Corporate Limits of the City of Laurel Certain Real Property Contingents to and Adjoining the City's Existing Corporate Boundaries Known as 7041 Conti Road, Laurel, Maryland, and 7051 Conti Road, Laurel, Maryland, owned by Strite Matter Conti LLC, consisting of approximately 32.68 acres." I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:41. Since no one has signed up to speak, I'm closing the public hearing at 6:41. Public hearing of record with possible action is scheduled for the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, July 24th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item number 14, second public hearing on the Charter Amendment Resolution Number 171, First 2017 Annexation, a Charter Amendment Resolution amending the Charter of the City of Laurel, Article 200, Corporate Limits to Add Section Number 251, First 2017 Annexation to Include Within the Description of the Corporate Limits of the City All of the Land Annexed Into the City via Annexation Resolution Number 11-17, which property is known as 7041 Conti Road and 7051 Conti Road, and consists of 32.68 acres of land, more or less. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I open the public hearing at 6:42. Since no one has scheduled, signed up to speak, I'm closing the public hearing at 6:42. Public hearing of record with possible action is scheduled for the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, July 24th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Item number 15, introduction and first public hearing of ordinance number 1961, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel amending the Laurel City Code, Chapter 14, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 14-1, Obstructions Generally, in Article 2, Roads and Sidewalks, adding Section 40-21, Permits, and Section 14-22, Permit Limitations, and amending Chapter 20, Section 20-23.9, Other Types of Permits, to clarify when permits are required for structures and obstructions located within a city, right-of-way, street, etc., and requiring a franchise or license from the city for the same.
Madam President, for a point of order, you said 1961, it's 1916.
Oh, I said 19, sorry about that. Ordinance number 1916, my mistake. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. It was discussed at our work session before this meeting. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:44. Since no one is scheduled to speak, I'm closing the hearing at 6:44. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Madam President, go ahead, Mr. Smalls.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Call the roll cam.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Querry?
Yes, with an amendment to have this sponsored by the city council.
Actually, the one, the copy that was presented on your, at your place, does have the sponsor line on it. It should be to the left of your book.
Agree.
Thank you.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Mel. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Mel.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion for adoption of ordinance number 1916 is read into the record, and as a point of order again, to change Mr. Les's name on legislation to that of our president pro temp.
Can I get a second?
I'm sorry. I don't see. Need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Okay. Call the roll cam.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Mel?
Okay, crew.
Since there's, there being no other agenda items to come before us, this meeting is now adjourned at 6:46 p.m.